He took my eye, that was my eye. I'm sitting.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's what it is. I bet it's absolutely probably true. Oh, poor baby. Yeah, you're sitting in the air conditioning cabin. That's a long way.
Yeah, I know.
So did you walk to the door?
Yeah.
Wow.
Thank you. I don't think you're wrong.
Okay. Thank you. When you are ready. Okay, welcome to the meeting. Would you all please rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. I'll switch with you. Uh, welcome to the regular business meeting of the Vermillion Township Board of Trustees for June 4, 2025, time is 6:32 PM. Trustee, uh, Mr. Johnson, will you please call the forecourt, please?
Here.
Mr. Bachman?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Both had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there any additional amendments or adjustments to it?
None.
We did have a couple of last minute things to add on, and they are on this amended version, which I think we have available out there in the audience. If there are no objections, the agenda will stand as amended. Correspondence submitted to the board, I don't currently have any. Open to the audience. Do you have anybody signed up on the sheet over there?
Now that I've got all the paper in front of me, we're going to go to the reports. Item number four, approval of previous minutes as written. Is there any objection to the minutes as they've been posted? Bearing on, the minutes will stand approved as written. Presentation of the warrants and treachery report. Will ask for a motion to approve warrants and report?
A motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
All in favor, signify. Or, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Rowe, have you a vote?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson, high vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. The warrants and treachery report stands approved. Uh, next is the fire department report. Chief Tron, if you please.
Yes, sir. Good evening, everybody. Fire and EMS runs May 1 through May 31, 2025. EMS 54. Two motor vehicle crashes, one commercial fire alarm, fuel spill. Two residential carbon monoxide alarms, one odor of natural gas, one open burn concern. Uh, we were dispatched and canceled one time here. Here to date, we're at 296 runs. The May fire and EMS runs are complete and submitted to the state. Hose and ladder testing is complete. We did have three sections of two and a half and three sections of inch and three quarter hose line that have been removed from service due to test failure. Uh, with that said, I did order four sections of two inch hose and three sections of inch and three quarter from Atlantic Emergency Solutions. I will not be ordering any two and a half inch hose as we have plenty in stock. Uh, the last meeting, I mentioned the safer grant through the Department of Justice FEMA. After speaking with our grant writer and digging into the new requirements, we will not be applying for this grant. The newest big stipulation is that DOJ FEMA wants four seats filled on an engine prior to departure from the station. My thoughts were to apply for this grant, get three full-time firefighter medics with these funds. However, uh, we were just not able to staff 12 full-time people, four people in those seats at this time, so. We'll keep an eye on that. Here's to come to see how that changes. Uh, we replaced two of the foam deductors on both the engines, uh, during the month as well. These were just two old pieces of equipment, and they did not function to their intended capacity. Um, I did send out one of our Sensa G2-4 gas meters for a new oxygen sensor to be installed. With that being said, I will be having one firefighter certified to work on these meters here on station versus sending the meter out when service is needed. And this will just eliminate excessive downtime and turn around and get that back in service. Squad 812 is at TNT laser alignment for repairs needed. Uh, repairs our spring eye bushings and new torque rod, and then realign the truck. Should be picking that up tomorrow. I am finalizing dates for truck PMs and pump tests with Atlantic Sution, uh, Solutions, Emergency Solutions at this time, and that completes my report.
Thank you for your part, chief. Do the trustees have any questions?
No.
Um, the only thing I would ask chief is, could you comment on open burning in Erie County currently with what, where we're at?
We're in the month of June, so there's no stipulation that when somebody can have an open burn. We did have an open burn concern last week. I believe it was last week, and they were burning before 6:00 PM.
Okay.
You know, there's some stipulations there that the government and ODR says you can and you cannot do. Uh, when they, when they put a block on it before 6:00 PM, it's simply because the conditions outside are too dry, and they don't want fires spreading and causing more undue response by fire personnel. Now, with that said, I was just getting ready to come down here, and I saw one of our neighboring fire departments going exactly out to a fire, brush fire type deal. So, we're in that area. It's going to get warmer, and I don't understand why there's no block in June or July or August, when the months are the hottest, but there's, there's no block there. So, um, we just follow the guidelines. Now, the other thing is medical. If you call me up and you say, listen, I got asthma, this guy's burning 1,000 feet of my home, I can't breathe, we'll come out and put that out, no matter what.
Right.
What we can say by the law, we can do. Um, and those were some of the things that the state fire marshal said you will do, um, when these calls arrive. So, um, you know, I don't have a problem with, as, as a resident, I don't have a problem with open burning at any time. However, as a resident, I'm going to follow those guidelines as well. So, if I'm going to have a brush pile burn, which is an agricultural burn at my house, I'm simply going to let my neighbors know, have them burn, is this a good day for you? Or I'm going to make sure the wind's blowing away from the house, those types of things. Now, I would guarantee that the wind isn't going to switch, but it's giving them a heads up, and they can say, you know what, I, I've had, I've been sick with a cold, this, that, and the other. If you can wait to do that until I feel better, that'd be great. So, you know, to me, the key is communication with your neighbors, number one. Um, and just follow the guidelines. If this is wait till after 6:00 PM, then wait till after 6:00 PM. And according to those guidelines, you need to be 1,000 feet. Or call me, and I can come out with a file and say, hey, break this file down into a couple smaller piles, burn one tonight, and then we'll find another night when you can do the next one. It's not really a, a big, big thing. I, a lot of it just happens. I, I don't think people. You know, I live out here in the township, and I, God, I'm not going to be bothering in any way, but it does offend somebody, so therefore we have to go off the dress.
Right.
So.
I just didn't want to attempt to answer the question myself, because you are the expert, so.
Yeah, they can look it up on the ODR website. They can go to the fire marshal's office and look it up under the fire code. And I only refer to those two, two entities when I, when I do that. And the guys went out and, um, took care of it. In fact, they called me back here at the station as I was getting ready to leave, and, and it got me on the phone and said, no, we're talking with the homeowner now, and, and, uh, we'll be back in service shortly.
Anything else for the fire chief now?
I do. Uh, just a quick, a comment, chief, and you and I have talked about this before. Even when there's an open burn ban from 66, can you comment on the right to have a ceremonial burn?
Sure, that's all part of that explanation in the ODR and in, in the fire code. Um, as long as, uh, June 14th, every June 14th, Flag Day. You're either going to go to the AMVET or BFW or, uh, out to Legion, because they shift that from place to place to place, and they are going to have an open burn. They are going to burn all the old torn, ripped flags that are no longer, I don't know if you want to say eligible to be flown, but they're tattered and torn, and they need to be destroyed. And that's the way the federal government has decided to rid of those flags versus throwing them in the landfill, which I think is appropriate, throwing it and burning it. So, every June 14th, they're going to have it. It's coming up. It's going to be right down the road here at Legion this year, so, um, that's coming up soon, so let's.
I try to tell anybody, chief, that asks me, if you're in question, try to get all the cheese.
Sure. I'm here every, most every day.
Absolutely.
So.
If you're doing a big cook and roast, pink roast thing, you can.
Well, I mean, you know, if you're out in your backyard and you're enjoying hot dogs and wieners on a open fire, it's not a lot. As long as it's clean fire, and you don't have a tire in there, I don't have a problem with it.
We don't allow the burning of rubbish, though. Say that out loud.
Correct. Correct, so.
Because that has been a problem in the past.
So.
So, that's the only thing. Does anybody else got anything else for the chief? Not, we're going to move on to the road department. Mr. Young, you'll report at least.
Road loading, loading was completed before the holiday, and next road loading will be before the 4th of July. We've been cleaning ditches and tiles on multiple roads. This will continue during the summer in between other jobs. Uh, we service both pack hose, pack hoses in-house. Uh, dirt patching is going to start probably next week. The tree, uh, the risen lake property has been moved. Uh, cleanup was busy. We filled five 40-yard dumpsters, one 80-yard scrap dumpster, and collected 331 tires. So, I got.
Any questions from Mr. Young?
No.
Um, you said the dirt patcher's going out. I would just mention to the, uh, folks out there on the website, if you want to make a notice to us and say, hey, there's a hole in front of my house at this address, then I can make sure that we get that information forwarded to Steve. Um, are you starting in any particular place, or just looking at township roads?
And we're going to start on the west side, northeast.
Okay. I think that's all I've got for Mr. Young. Anybody else? No? All right. Next one is township administrator report. Mr. Baxter.
Uh, we are currently looking at changing up some of our equipment for the road department and getting some estimates on, uh, set equipment, excavator, wheel loader. Um, I would like to ask for the approval for west roofing to wash and seal our skylights. Uh, I missed that in the last estimate, uh, last month's meeting for 21, or for 1,400 bucks, and you guys had approved the 2140 on the ceiling repairs, but that, uh, the 1,400 to wash and seal our fiberglass skylights that are showing vans, um, would be $1,400. So, I thought that would be a good thing. Since they're here doing the roof ceiling, if we could possibly tag team that as well. That's in the estimates I gave you guys. And then, let's see. My IT, our IT guy is looking into a new refurbished computer, uh, since mine is 1,000 years old. I was able to get some training in on our LBRS system. I had to install it because it was not on the admin's desktop. Uh, iWorks is our permitting software. I've also been able to get some, uh, time with those folks as well. We share that with the city. Um, I'm not an admin on that account, so I don't have the ability to change things. I got to ask for permission, which sometimes that takes a minute, correspondence between the two departments. Uh, and I also, I need to update all of our new scheduled fees, uh, that are currently out of date in that system. I also discovered that the online portal, our online portal, uh, that we can, our folks can fill out, uh, applications, permits. The email was deactivated, so no one was getting notifications on any of the information that people were filling out online. That is now remedied. Let's see. And then, I also found out that, uh, let's see, the zoning permits, uh, that portion of it was deactivated. So, when you go into the portal, you can see, like, all of the permits that the zoning department does. For some reason, you can see building, but when it came to zoning, nada. That was also deactivated. That is now fixed, so you can see the, the permits online if you so choose to. I've reached out to Cardy's Tree Service, uh, to get some estimates on actual, uh, types of tree work, so we have a better understanding moving forward on tree work that we need to do and what it's going to cost us. I would like to also ask that the trustees consider some kind of contract or licensing fee with proper VWC and insurance compliance to further protect our residents. Uh, I know that we do not have the billing department in the township, uh, but I have had a few instances where I have homeowners, uh, dare I say, our senior citizens, um, not properly being serviced and/or taken care of by not unlicensed contractors in the township. So, I think that would be a, a great benefit to our people if we can provide that service. Doesn't require a billing department. It just requires them to, uh, sign up with us, so we know who's working in our township. Uh, let's see. And then also, I found that the online, on the online portal for the forms, the storm, uh, permit application for zoning apps is also not available. Uh, I will reach out to Claire Reagan tomorrow to see if that can be updated and fixed as well. And that concludes my zoning and administrative reports.
Okay. Um, I do have a couple of questions, but I'll refer to the other trustees first. Don, you want to?
Uh, I do. Uh, would you entertain a motion now, or would you prefer a new business for the cleaning of the skylights?
Um, let's push that to new business and go from there.
Okay. Uh, through the chair, I would like to ask that our administrator, Joe Baxter, uh, start accumulating estimates for the lot clearing and cleanup at Cuttable Cemetery uh, within the complete surveyed lot, um, that was recently surveyed. You'd have to say exactly what it was.
Right.
February-ish, whatever.
So, like that.
For that, and we can move forward with that.
Okay. I'm sure you can get that together. Anything else?
Um, that's it.
Mr. Johnson?
Uh, my only question was with finding the contractors, how, uh, what's your, what's your thought on how to get them into here, or is it just going out and seeing?
So, most of the, uh, anytime you do building in, in the township and/or the city, you got to have a building. You have a building permit. So, they're going to the city. Um, when you go to the city as a contractor, that's a requirement to get a permit, is to be licensed. We don't require that in the township, so it's not, they, they don't require it. It could just be a prerequisite, so when they go to get a building permit, they also are going to come see us to sign up, uh, to be registered, to actually work in the township, so we can keep an eye on them. And like I said, I feel like it's a further protection for our homeowners and residents, uh, moving forward, because you don't know what you don't know, and unfortunately, that's tens of thousands of dollars later.
So, I assume you'll try and figure out something that'll work.
Definitely work on this, yes.
On that topic, my understanding was, the city used to have a contractor review board, and the city also, part of the building department, had the requirement that they were, all the contractors were licensed and all that. If that is not currently the case, if you could report back on that, I think that's still the case. But again, I don't know.
I will ask.
That will be on you. Um, next one I have is, what's the status of South Cherry Road project? Why is Berdu not started yet, and can you find out what date they will start at?
When I contacted Mr. Berdu, he said he would let me know when he was ready to start the job.
Okay. I do have some of the Cherry Road residents out there asking when it's going to start. So, if we can get an answer on that at the next meeting, that would be helpful.
Sure thing.
Um, I did send you, uh, forward the emails from the website that I got about, uh, if we knew what was going on on Darrow Road. Resident reported that there was a lot of oops markings. Were you able to find out anything on that?
No, hell, I never did contact you back about that, and, uh, oops hasn't called me either, so.
All right. Um, we need to change the voicemail on the landline. It's out of date.
Oh, yeah.
And then, on the front sign, uh, one of our residents, Mr. Hall, has offered to help. Um, he's got a little expertise in that area. I did advise, uh, Lorraine Bailey, the secretary, that he's allowed to come and take a look at it. And that way, if there's anything you can do to help us, um, Lorraine said that she thought it was a good idea to seek any help or advice that we could get. And Mr. Hall, for those of you that don't know, is a member of our BZA, so it's not like we're letting some total stranger come in. But it is an area that he has some expertise on, so if he wants to take a look, I'm comfortable with it. So, if he shows up, knocks on the door, you know why and where. The only last one I had was backup computer workstation. Um, when your computer failed, we needed to get some things done. There was no second workstation to get done. I know I did talk to Mike Reagan. I knew you were in the room when we did it, but I do think that that's an absolute necessity to have two working workstations in case one goes down. So, that's really all I have for Joe. Is there anything else for Mr. Baxter?
I do. I did want to comment, uh, through the chair to our administrator that, um, there has been some attention drawn to some lots that had excessively high grass on it. And, uh, Joey did a great job, um, and, uh, Knight came out and cut the grass on Conizal Road, and then there was one on Lake Road also, and I understand he reached out to the homeowner. He was quick to do it. On, uh, Risen Road, I was riding my bicycle down there the other day, and, uh, where you come down the dip right before you get to Lake Road. I don't know who owns that property there, Joe, but there was a, there was a, uh, there was a backhoe there making quite a bit of a trench. I don't know what that was about. You might want to take a look.
I'll check into it. And Joe, did we have a, did I miss it? Did we have a report of how many permits issued?
Oh, yeah. Uh, I'm sorry. 11, 11, uh, 11 permits were issued for a total of $710.
Okay. We'll make sure we covered that. Anything else for Joe? You want to fiscal officer hold? Mrs. Johnson, if you please.
Hey, uh, you have, uh, reported the, uh, proposed records retention schedule. Um, the records retention schedule form RC2 is ready for approval. Pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 121.22 and Ohio Revised Code 149.42. Once approved, it will be submitted to the Ohio History Connection Local Government Records Program for review. Then it will be forwarded to the Auditor of State's Records Officer and Office. And so, I just see a motion for that to approve.
Okay.
And that's it. That's all.
If, um, no objection, please, trustees, go ahead and do that now. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the RC2 as written by a fiscal officer.
I make a motion that we, uh, accept the RC2 as written by a fiscal officer.
Second?
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 If you're a purgatory, I have John Hancock on that, just as soon as we can.
Thank you.
Anything else on the move?
That's all.
All you got. Okay, we've got resolutions. We've got one resolution to read. It is resolution number 25, 2025-13. A resolution declaring a health and safety emergency upon North Cherry Road under the provisions of ORC 55.82 for a period of six months effective June 4, 2025, and declaring an emergency. Uh, Mr. Bachman introduced the following resolution to move towards adoption. Whereas, the Vermillion Township Board of Trustees have a statutory responsibility under various sections of the Ohio Revised Code to maintain township roads and ensure public health and safety of township residents and other members of the public transversing township roads. Whereas, Ohio Revised Code Section 5571.02, Control and Maintenance of Township Roads states the Board of Township Trustees shall have control of the township roads and of its township, and except for those township roads where the board places on a non-maintained fence, pursuant to Section 5571.20 of the Revised Code, and shall keep them in good repair. Whereas, if an owner of an undedicated road, stream bank, ditch, or any parcel abutting a township road in the unincorporated territory of the township has not provided for the removal of snow, ice, water, debris, or other obstructions from the road or road bank, the board may provide for that removal immediately and directly or in cooperation with Erie County Engineers Office. Whereas, prior to providing for the removal, the board shall give or make a good faith attempt to give oral notice to the owner or owners of the road or bank of the board's intent to clear the road or bank and to impose a service charge for doing so. The board shall establish just and equitable service charges for the removal to be paid, except as provided in Division B of ORC 505.82 by the owners of the road or bank. Therefore, now, be it resolved by the Vermillion Township Board of Trustees here in County, State of Ohio, in accordance with 505.82, to formally declare a health and safety emergency now exists that threatens life or property within the unincorporated territory of the township, or that such an emergency is imminent, including but not limited to an emergency due to a natural disaster caused by flooding of North Cherry Road and the public right of way, the board may exercise the powers described in Division A 1 and 2 and B of ORC 505.82 during the emergency for a period of time not to exceed six months following the adoption of its, this resolution. It is further resolved, this declared, this resolution is declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of public peace, health, safety, and welfare of the township. The reason for the emergency is to prevent flooding of portions of North Cherry Road, the public right of way, and preserve the statutory responsibility of the township trustees to maintain township roads and public rights of way in a manner consistent with preserving the public health and safety while traveling upon township roads, specifically the portion of Cherry Road between the intersections of Brisbane and Cherry Roads and the intersection of Darrow and Cherry Road. Um, Mr. Rowe, would you care to second this resolution at this time?
Um, I would like to second that with discussion.
Okay. Uh, that the resolution is made and seconded, then open the floor to discussion. We'll start with the vice chair, Mr. Rowe.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I would suggest that we, uh, table the resolution. With the extent, uh, of the reference to ORC codes, uh, there is litigation that has been taken against some townships, and I would like to table it for now and try to garner additional information, and then revisit it another township meeting.
Mr. Johnson, any comment on this?
I feel, uh, that we do need to look into it a little bit deeper. I have, uh, the ORC codes are there already in place. I would like to get a little bit more information based on that and be able to make a stronger and healthier decision on however we're going to proceed with this, uh.
Okay.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, may I add that I agree wholeheartedly that the trustees need to make a statement of clarity where we stand when it comes to these issues.
Absolutely.
Safety of roadways.
Well, with this said, I believe that these, this board of trustees has a statutory responsibility, that we need to stand up and say it out loud, that we have a statutory responsibility, and that we don't need to wait until the road floods again to say, what should we do? I think we should have a resolution in place that clearly states our statutory authority, which the statutes define, but it also says that should we need to act, if it rains seven inches tomorrow and that road floods wherever, we need to act. And I want to be clear that we are going to do that.
We absolutely.
And for that reason, that's why I want to move this resolution forward. Doesn't mean we're going to do anything. It just means if the road is obstructed in any way, shape, or form, it is going to be the intent of this board as a whole to move forward at the emergency, not wait for legislation on any property or anywhere on the township. Because I don't think that we should be held hostage by any one property owner filing any one lawsuit or any indecision at any county agency. We have a clear, defined statutory authority, and we should exercise it. So, with that said, unless either one of you want to make a motion to table it, I'd like to put it to a vote.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we table it.
Resolution 25-13.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
None.
Okay. Um, there is a motion to table resolution 2025-13. I will call the roll. Mr. Rowe?
Uh, yes.
Table. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir.
And then, Mr. Bachman votes no.
I believe that.
Well, I vote no. No, resolution is tabled at this time.
All right.
Executive sessions. Uh, we have two on the agenda. We have a motion to go into executive session. ORC 121.22G3 to confer on the attorney on matters of pending litigation. Would you be the one who wants to make that motion?
I make that motion.
Is there a second?
I second.
All right. Stephanie, will you call the roll call on this, since it's an executive session, please?
Yes.
Mr. Bachman?
Yes?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
All right. That motion passes. The second one is a motion to go in the executive session. ORC 121.22G1 to discuss personnel, to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee. Would you be the one who care to make that motion?
I will make that motion.
Mr. Johnson's made that motion. Is there a second?
I will second.
Okay. Mrs. Johnson, will you please follow the roll on this executive session? Okay, Mrs. Johnson, will you please follow the roll on this executive session?
Mr. Bachman?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, that one will also carry. For the audience's benefit, we will conduct these after the new business is conducted for the meeting. It will be a lengthy executive session, I know in advance because there's a lot that we need to discuss. So if you want to go get dinner and come back, feel free. With that, we will move on to correspondence. Again, we don't have any immediate correspondence that met the deadlines, so we will go into opening the audience of commentary and inquiry. The first on the list is Mr. Tom Kukumire, one-twenty-four Grand Harbor.
Oh, yield to the chair.
Yield to the chair, thanks, sir. Second on the list and last on the list is Rob Dunn, twelve-eight-oh-nine Cherry Road. Mr. Dunn, you have five minutes.
Oh, thank you. I've done twelve-eight-oh-nine Cherry Road. I think the idea to get contractors licensed in the township is an ideal. I drive around all the time and I see contractors that aren't licensed or a one man in a van. They're technically licensed, they're taking advantage of residents or handyman doing electrical work or stuff, but they're not state licensed, they didn't. So I think that's a phenomenal idea. As far as Ohio Edison or Hoops or whatever, if you guys need contacts, I've got all these guys, district, the reps, all their numbers. I can work with these guys all the time. Let me know, let me know all their numbers, get ahold of them. You had mentioned you were looking.
You got it.
Sorry.
The only guy that is different.
Hoses and stuff. I buy stuff off of GovBeel and that. I just seen a few weeks ago, and I don't know if they're still there or not, but there was a local fire department that had bought overstock. Too many. And they were selling them at an auction at a discounted rate. I didn't know if you actually looked at any of that stuff.
Keep that.
I wouldn't, yeah. And if I see them, I'll throw it out there to you next time. I didn't know you were even looking for them.
And we don't buy too much too often.
Yeah, and I think that's what had happened, was they bought in bulk because they got a discounted price.
Sure.
And then they were offloading some of the other ones. So it'd be a benefit to save some money for the township. I don't know if you can actually do that or not.
I will check with the chief and let you know.
But I think it was a phenomenal idea. Beyond that, congratulations on the new township trustees. And Mr. Baxter, thank you for doing your due diligence and giving us a compliance letter that we are no longer in any kind of zoning violations of the township. It's been obvious the entire time we're zoned agricultural. We use our property for that. We're state certified, we're federally registered. We qualify for equip programs. We actually have the state coming out to do the entire ten-year plan so that they can start creating a healthier forest. Our property had been abandoned. It was the last, it was a complete disaster mess when we bought it and we are currently working on renovating and rehabbing it back to a healthier forestry. And the State of Ohio and federal government really appreciates that. They've actually gave us grant money to help do all this and they're taking care of it, so. Thank you for doing your due diligence. I wish the last township officials would have done the same exact thing. Doesn't take long to check things, do your diligence, walk around, look, see what's actually going on. Thank you, guys. Doing a great job.
Mr. Chairman, good evening. Okay, we're going to move on to old business and new business items. First one on the list is the building maintenance and station one. Being door replacement or repair, the review of estimates, and a motion to resolution as needed. We tabled this last meeting, you guys want to bring this back and talk about it again, so here we are.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we have collected several estimates. There's varying differences in door quality as we have collected these, so to have a true comparison of the doors. We wanted every company that submitted an estimate to have comparable doors, thickness, insulation. And I know there's difference in thickness and insulation, but it got down to actual window insulation. So we're getting it down very close. I would ask, Mr. Chairman, that we table it once again until we look at the numbers and make the best decision we can.
Any comment?
No, it's the same.
Okay. Well, we did get estimates last time, we did work at them.
And we have some new ones.
And there is a repair estimate that I find reasonable. And I guess I'm trying to understand why we're going to wait another month to try and repair the doors if that's what in fact we're going to do. So barring a motion to table the door repair. You have a?
I would like to make a motion to table the door repair with this explanation. That if you look at the, so everybody knows, and.
Can we just make the motion and then talk about it?
Yeah, I made the motion.
Any second? Any discussion?
Discussion. So the discussion on it is, one of the things that we're looking at to be transparent is we have a couple of quality garage door companies that are very close in the complete replacement of all eight doors. There are some repairs at fifteen thousand dollars to repair two doors. My understanding is the doors are waterlogged from the windows down. So if we do a fifteen thousand dollar repair on two doors, we have eight. So potentially in another year, we could have another two doors repaired, but another, I don't think they're going to go down, but let's just use fifteen thousand. So the building, I believe, was constructed in nineteen eighty-nine. It was, and I'm sure the doors are the same age. So what we're actually wrestling with is to make the best decision we can because if we can get the door, all eight doors replaced with the most quality door we can at, let's say, forty-two to forty-five thousand dollars to repair two at fifteen, if you took that math and multiplied it by the eight doors, you're at ninety thousand dollars. So we're just looking at being conscious. I don't think that by the next township trustee meeting is an extended period of time to make that decision. I just want to make the best one. And that's the reason.
Mr. Jackson? It's the same concept. We're dealing with a few more estimates that came in at the wire. And the numbers are great. I want to cross-reference those with those companies to make sure that it's an apples to apples.
Okay. The chief was comfortable, my take on it was comfortable with just doing repairs to the doors. I was comfortable with just doing the repairs. I do follow the guidance of the chief's recommendation. If you want to table this for another month, you've made the motion, so let's do a vote. All in favor of tableing the motion another month?
Yes.
No. Motion passes to table the repair of the doors for one more month. So. Moving on to item B, motion to approve the preliminary plans of Knight Development for the formerly named Chardonnay Circle West Development. Provided all previously discussed items on twenty-one May twenty-twenty-five between the board, trustees, and the developer are met to the satisfaction of the board of trustees and with the concurrent acceptance of the current Homeowners Association for Wayne and Chardonnay Streets before final approval was given. I'm going to open the discussion. We do have representatives of the developer here to address the board with any questions you might have here and now. But I would like to move this forward to a preliminary approval if that is the decision of this body. So with that said, I will, I will make a motion to approve the preliminary plans of Knight Development for Chardonnay Circle West Development. Is there a second to that motion?
Do we have the letter from the HOA?
That's going to be in discussion. Got to make the motion.
I say.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to approve the preliminary plan for Knight Development for Chardonnay Circle West Development in the discussion. Your first question is obviously, do we have the letter?
Do we have the letter? Do we have the letter?
Can representative step up to the podium, state your name and who you're representing?
Nico Aaron, representing Knight Development. We don't have a letter, we have the present page away. We decided to come first instead.
Okay.
So any questions, I'll have to go through again.
You won't hear from the president.
I would like that, yes.
Okay, if you could step aside and if the HOA president could step on. State your name and address from the record, please.
Tom Cunnion.
Hi, Tom.
Three-oh-five Chardonnay. I'm the president of the association. The developer's going to require an amendment to our HOA agreement that requires sixty-seven percent of the people that live there to vote for it. I hope they had to get a letter to all of the people by the weekend and get a response. If we can't get a clear response, we have a meeting scheduled for six-nineteen, what are we going to ask, you know, for a vote? And I think we'll resolve one way or another by then. So there we go.
Let's just stay at home for a minute. Tom, follow up question here.
The only statement I want to make is, is I speak for myself on behalf of the other trustees. We want to make it clear to Knight Development and whoever the builder be, Ryan, whatever, that as part of the Chardonnay Circle is already developed, we want the mirror image on the other side. So we want that understood with, you know, all the residents. We're going to do our due diligence on that.
The only concern I have, and this is the thing that we discussed at length with the developer, was that the responsibility for maintenance in the sidewalks in the entire Chardonnay Circle becomes a responsibility of the homeowners. Currently, the township has some responsibility on sidewalk that we, in my opinion, should have never had. And it has been discussed in the past before other trustees that nobody knew why it was. So moving forward, we want to move forward to where the property owners are responsible for the sidewalks as we believe it should be. And that's our sticking point is that the homeowners on the existing homes, as well as the new homes, have to be responsible for the sidewalks. I don't know if that's going to be a problem for your HOA or not. Would you care to comment?
Do you need something from me to say that I'm okay with that?
Yeah, that the homeowner association officially is okay taking responsibility for the sidewalks that are existing and the ones.
I bet anybody knows that we're not responsible, so. I guess I can include that in the letter and say.
That the township will no longer be responsible for any maintenance and repairs.
That's not an option, is it?
Apparently currently it is, that we assume responsibility to repair some of the sidewalks on Wayne and Chardonnay. So if that's not the case, then, yeah, we will confirm that, but the records that I'm aware of say otherwise, so.
I want to clarify something. Wayne Street is not part of our HOA.
Right.
Never, and it hasn't been since probably oh-eight or nine oh-nine.
Right.
So I can't speak for anybody there.
Right, I understand that. That's why we were just talking about Chardonnay. And the reason I will tell you, and I will use our township administrator. Before he was our township administrator, he was a concrete contractor. And he had a, had done a project of, what was it, about ten thousand dollars ago? To fix those sidewalks. So on that basis, I know that the township was involved in fixing sidewalks in the past. And it was both Wayne and Chardonnay, so it never got done.
Who fixed the sidewalks on Wayne this year?
The Redwood Association, as far as I know, went ahead and did their own repairs.
I thought so, too.
And that's why the bid and that contract never went through. So that's the kind of thing we're trying to avoid moving forward.
For me.
And what is your sense, if I can ask, of how the current HOA feels or the residents that are there now about this additional development?
I don't know.
Okay. So I guess we'll have to see what happens with that. Any other questions for this?
No.
Thanks, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Nick, I think you can sit down. We've got a motion to accept the preliminary approval of Chardonnay Circle West Development, hearing no further discussion. I'll call a voice vote, or a roll call vote on this. Mr. Rowe, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Bachman also votes, votes yes. You have your preliminary approval. All right, moving forward, we're going to new business, discussion of a resolution and necessity and steps required to move forward with a fire levy upon the November twenty-twenty-five ballot. I've spoken at length with both our fire chief and our fiscal officer. We do have the necessary information to move forward. The current individual thinking is that we move forward with a replacement levy in the amount of five mils. This would replace the existing one-point-six, what is it, nine? One-point-six-nine with a new replacement levy at five mil, which would, oh, buy new apparatuses, staff, EMS, folks. So I would like a motion from this board to move forward to pursue a five mil levy for fire apparatus and personnel, a replacement levy. Do I have that motion? I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? You guys want to talk about this anymore? All right, Stephanie and I will get to work on the paperwork if necessary forward. We do have to forward it to Mr. Bennett in the prosecutor's office and brush by the auditor, our auditor's office with some of this information before we formally submit it. So look for that to come back in two weeks at our next meeting. Moving on, new business, motion to authorize the board of trustees to act individually with the statutory authority of the board of trustees collectively to remedy issues in public safety upon township roads and right-of-way accesses in the absence or action of Erie County Engineers. A while back, they had a problem with, I'll make that motion, to authorize the trustees to act individually, is there a second? Second, okay, having a proper motion and second. A while back, they wanted, the trustees wanted two or three people to notify the road department and that was just cumbersome and ridiculous. The sheriff usually calls Steve and says, this is a problem, he goes out and fixes the problem. What this does is allows us to agree in advance that if any one of us sees a tree on our road or a sound trip road, we can literally just pick up the phone on behalf of all three of us and say, Steve, go out, fix this problem. Is that going to be a problem with that? Hearing none? Is there, just do a voice vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. All right, we now have that, and like I said, it's basically, it's a pre-approved. If there's a problem in the road, this eliminates that question. All right, new business, discussion of records retention schedules, submission of RC two. We've already approved that part with Mrs. Johnson. She did give me the nine-page letter. And it's just going to be a housekeeping thing from here on, so I don't know that we need any further discussion on that unless you guys have to. Hearing none, moving on, new business. Motion to have the board of trustees join as an active and interested party in the pending VZA appeal hearing on the legal matter involving the Erie County Commissioners, the Vermillion Township Board of Trustees, and parcel number twelve-dash-zero-zero-two-zero-zero-point-zero-zero-zero, commonly known as twelve-eight-oh-nine Cherry Road. Mr. Bennett has submitted an appeal to a zoning decision. I think that we should be part of this VZA hearing. Not just sit in the audience and attend. I think we should be able to communicate, so. Hearing that, is there any further discussion on the motion to do this? Okay. A motion to have the board of trustees join as an active and interested party for the pending VZA appeals hearing on the legal matter involving Erie County Commissioners, the Vermillion Township Board of Trustees, and parcel number twelve-dash, that number for twelve. It's what's written in the agenda. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Yes.
Who was the second?
Okay. All right, who's the second? Johnson's second, my apologies. So we've got a motion, second, and we voted all in favor, so we're moving on. Trying to get through this rather quick so we can get these folks out here. New business, motion to conduct a public hearing on the recommendations of the zoning commission on the issue of resolution thirty-two-ten-twenty-five-nine, political signs during the next regularly scheduled township trustee meeting of June eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five at the request of the chair under agenda item nine, incidental business to have posted and appropriate public notice on the official township web portal by the fiscal officer. I will make this motion. Is there a second?
I say.
All right, Mr. Rowe has seconded. I talked to the prosecutor's office. We don't have to schedule a separate public hearing for this because it is basically just a tax amendment. So we will hear commentary from any audience members that want to comment on what we're going to do to political signs. And the proposed change will be in the notice. So any further discussion?
No.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion also carries. Last item of the new business, the motion to discussion, or not motion, but a discussion on action taken by the VZA on three June twenty-twenty-five and required remedial action as needed by motion or resolution. I did talk to both the health department today and I talked to the prosecutor's office. Everything that the VZA did was appropriate, but there are other issues that don't involve the VZA. We don't have the authority to step in. VZA decisions are VZA decisions. But the question, for those that don't know the full skinny, is the VZA approved a variance for a pole barn, but the pole barn was situated over a sanitary system, which is something you cannot do. So they're going to step in and make sure that that never gets done. And we wanted to make Mr. Baxter aware that they can't go ahead and build this. So we can't issue any building, there's only permits to get them to move forward until the health department's addressed it. And I know you did talk to Heather today. Did you have anything you wanted to add on that, or?
She basically reiterated that they cannot because of the leach bed and their second leach bed coming in use. You can't have it going on there. It's the smartest thing in the period.
Yes.
This is a no-brainer, so. All right, that's all I have. We're going to go into executive session. We're going to recess the meeting at seven, look at my clock, is that one of the old ones? Seven-twenty. And we will call the meeting back when we're done. I will include Mr. Bennett and.
Birthday parties in here.
We went to average.
And anniversary. I think Joey did.
Don't forget the poker.
Oh, yeah, we did poker. Love poker. The DJ just left, doesn't matter.
And we have your quarter on.
So we're for Chinese.
Yes, yes, it is.
You get a bowl of cherries.
Do us a raise of brand, thank you.
And we'll call the meeting back to order at nine-thirty. Chair will call a call, or the fiscal office will call a call and roll call, please.
Mr. Rowe?
Here.
Mr. Bachman?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here. Since there is a call and present under incidental business, the only thing that I thought we had to consider was a motion to waive the fee on the BZA appeal, but I see that in the language of it. We already did that, so I don't think we need to do that. The announcement for the next meeting will be six-thirty PM, June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. What other incidental business do we need?
The motion to allow the west roof system to repair the skylights, clean skylights, repair the skylights, not to exceed fourteen hundred dollars.
Okay, is there a second, Mr. Johnson?
Who would be a second, sir?
Any discussion?
None.
I'm not ready to make a decision on that, but I'm not ready to table it, so I'll call the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the chair will oppose because I didn't have time to research it enough. The motion passes. Is there any other business before the board, Mr. Rowe?
None.
Mr. Johnson?
None.
Hearing no other business, if there is no objection, the chair declares this meeting to stand adjourned at nine-thirty-five. Look at the clock to be sure.